Okay, are we all, are we all ready? Right, who are we missing? Ah, yeah. Yeah, is Alex Perkins somewhere? We wait for Alex Perkins to kind of, yeah. Hello, Alex Perkins. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for staying on after our council meeting. And hopefully you've got a quick refreshment and then we'll move on to our cabinet meeting. So, good evening to everybody. There's no fire alarm plan for this evening. Should the alarm sound, please leave via the nearest available emergency exit. Two of the closest exits are through the glass doors behind you to my left and through the double doors onto the riverside that's behind you. Please meet at Café Des Amis. Members of the public are welcome to make their own recordings this meeting using whatever non-disruptive method they think is suitable. I would like to remind everyone present that this meeting is being filmed and may be available to view in live and archive form via the council's website. If you're seated in the public gallery, it's possible that the cameras may capture your image. If you wish to avoid being filmed, it is recommended you make a member of staff aware who can direct you to where to sit. Biscuit Gardens gates and Riverside are locked at sunset, so they're locked now. So members of the public must leave the Guildhall by the side exit behind the glass doors. Okay, is everyone happy to stay? Right, representation of the public?
None of those.
Okay, that's really good. Yeah, okay, so go straight in then now. So, welcome to the agenda part of the meeting. I mean, the Cabinet. Cabinet is part of the council's responsible most day-to-day decisions. It is chaired by the leader who is elected by the council, and that's me, Alan Bulldock. Other cabinet members are as follows: councillor Soul, deputy leader and cabinet man for finance; councillor Dixie, cabinet man for property and performance; councillor Hazelton, cabinet man for housing; councillor Dawkins, cabinet man for the environment and climate change; councillor Charlotte Cornell, cabinet man for council services, culture and heritage; councillor Chris Cornell, cabinet man for economic development and inclusion and the coastal towns champion; councillor Ricketts, cabinet man for tourism, transport and rural champion; and councillor Nolan, community engagement, safety and enforcement. The cabinet collectively provide strategic leadership to the council. First point is, any apologies for absence, Lauren?
We've got apologies, Chair, from councillor Charlotte Cornell and councillor Dixie.
Yeah, thank you for that. Do we have any declarations of interest received already? Okay, has anybody wished to make any declarations of interest? Okay, thank you for that. Does any member of the Cabinet wish to make any announcements tonight? Go ahead, councillor Nolan.
Thank you. I wish to extend the thanks to various members of staff. First of all, the staff who are responsible for operating Lifeline. As people know, Lifeline went down and members of the control room and the team worked jolly hard to get that up and going. And of course, we know that our residents, loved ones rely on Lifeline and it was obviously a sort of panicky time. So I'd like to thank all the officers who took part in getting that back on. And also, sometimes when we have an emergency, we don't know about the officers that step forward in that emergency. So I'd like to thank all the officers who stepped forward when there was the fire in the Hirm Bay care home. And I'd like to extend thanks to those as well. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks councillor Nolan. That's some, I think it goes from all of us here. We really appreciate that work that's over and above over those last couple of events especially. So, thank you. And I know you'll pass it on to the minority. Thank you for that. We are lucky tonight, we've actually got a public speaker, Rick Norman. So we'll take Rick now, if that's okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. I'm not going to directly address the recommendation that you got before you, but I do want to talk in a general way about certain worries from the perspective of members of the public, and that's to do with the danger of making local government more remote and more inaccessible. The White Paper talks about empowering communities to take back control, but the reality is that in important ways, local government is going to become more distant and less connected to people. There are three aspects of that that I want to talk about. One is just the question of physical location, physical location of buildings, offices, meeting places and so on. As councillor Thomas said in the earlier meeting, members of the public are still going to ask the question, where do I go with my problems? So I want to emphasise the need for careful thought, not just about the location of the offices in the new council, but also the number of them, the accessibility of them, the plurality of them. And that applies also to meetings. I know not everybody are council junkies, council meeting junkies in the way that some of us are, but people do sometimes want to go to meetings. For example, meetings of planning committees where they have a particular application they want to be there for, and again, the meeting needs to be accessible to people. So that's the first point that I want to emphasise, that attention is paid to. Secondly, it's a matter of accessibility of councillors. I know you all do a great job in keeping in touch with the people that you represent, but in the unitary, that's going to be obviously more difficult because councillors will be representing more people. And this is where the point comes in that was mentioned by councillors Flanagan and Watkins and Turnbull and others, about the lowest tier of local government, the need to strengthen parish councils, combine some of them, but also the vex question of new town councils. And as you yourself mentioned, Chair, that's tricky for obvious reasons. We had the CT5 issue that ended in tears, basically. So it's going to be very much a matter of timing. I think it's important to start the conversation, but not to rush into a new community governance review. Maybe around 27, 28, something like that might be the time to aim for, but we need to start the conversation before then, and I hope that that will happen. And then the third aspect of involvement is the engagement of public in the process of change, something that councillor Dawkins, among others, mentioned and emphasised very strongly. Chair, you said in the previous meeting that you hope to hear from the public in the months to come, and I know you're coming to the ACRA meeting on Thursday, and that's great, and the residents' associations are an opportunity to cascade things out. Canterbury Forum and CG5 Forum have a role to play. But the important thing I want to stress is that it's a matter of going to the public, not just expecting the public to turn up to meetings, and doing so at early stages. The corporate plan talks about co-production of policies, not just statutory consultations. And now that's going to be incredibly difficult in this case with so many councils involved. But I do hope that as far as possible, it will be, you will be able to involve members of the public in the process of actually creating what's going to come as a unitary authority, not just producing a plan and then just going up to a formal consultation. The more you can involve people, the better, because the more that will help to overcome this problem of local government becoming even more distant from people. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to emphasise those points, and I hope that we'll all be looking at them in the months and weeks to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rick. That's really appreciated and some wise words as always. Thank you. Much appreciated. And I'm looking forward to coming to ACRA on Thursday and hopefully lots and lots of questions and see where we go. Thank you. Now, you'll be pleased to say I'm going to spare you any introduction unless any of the officers need to clear anything that, okay, I think, so what I'm going to do now is to read out the proposal that we need to resolve tonight. We can look at the content of that. If we agree, that's fine. If we want to change it, that's fine too. And we all know the reason why we're doing that is basically to allow me the elbow room to negotiate for us. And then we will come back with the reports back and we'll slowly, over the months to come, we'll evolve an answer that is going to perform the basis of what be put forward as Canterbury City Council in November, or maybe a joint one with other councils, or whatever format that takes in November, it takes. But most importantly, it will be the view that best reflects what we would like to see evolving in our unitary arrangements. So, point one, that the council will make a formal response jointly with other councils in Kent and Medway to an invitation letter dated the 5th of February 2025, appendix one. All of you have had a copy of that now. That's the last one that come in at the last minute and the slight changes to it. So if you're happy with that, then that's what we will do, if you give that authority. So, point two, the leader of the council in consultation with the Joint Chief Executives is given delegated authority to firstly, develop a final interim plan jointly with other Kent and Medway principal authorities as part of the request from government in the invitation letter 5th of February. That's that paragraph that's in that letter. The second point is submit a final interim plan to the government by 21st of March. So that's the one we're talking about next week, which is the one you've all got copies of in your hand now. And last bit is to submit further supporting data and documentation where this adds further substance to the questions asked, the council and invitations, letter dated 5th of Feb. So that may well involve some research work, some work with consultants or whatever it is. So we need the facts. With Mike on that, let's make decisions based on facts and not guesswork. That's not the way you're going to make a good decision, a decision that's going to last 50 years. So let's put the facts together, let's get the information we need, let's work it through, let's talk about it sensibly, and that's why I feel that we can go forward with this. So, those are what you're asking, what the Cabinet is being asked to agree to. Can I just have somebody to second that resolution, please?
Seconded, Chair.
Thanks councillor Soul, that's appreciated. So it's proposed by me, it's seconded by councillor Soul. We can now make comments or debate as you wish to go. So, Alex, can you start, please?
Thank you, Chair. I have two things. First of all, a couple of comments, and I would like to propose an amendment, but I'm going to save that for a second. To Rick Norman's point, thank you very much for that as well. We held a meeting last Thursday with the parish councils involved in the Parish Charter, and a very successful meeting, I think probably the best meeting I've attended with parish councils in my time here. And one of the councillors said at one point, oh, is this something you have to do to tick off a box for consultation? And it wasn't something we had to do, and it was an idea that came through conversations with some of the parish councillors where we asked, first of all, asked their views on local government reform. They received the briefing from our Joint Chief Executives, which went down very, very well. A lot of comments from councillors saying it was one of the best briefings they've actually had in their time from the city council. It really felt like, perhaps in the death throes of Canterbury City Council, that our relationship with the parish councils is on the right track, and hopefully that they will remember us fondly as they continue and we disappear. But that's the first of many conversations that we're having with the parishes, and going along hand in hand with that, of course, is what we do with those unparished areas. That's something we're considering. I think, Rick, your point of when we look at that right now probably isn't the best time, but it is something that's on the agenda and something we really want to look at, particularly, obviously, you've got Canterbury, Hirm Bay and Whitstable. What will happen with those areas when they do come under unitaries and their councillors sit far away? I really liked your point about planning committees as well, and I think that's something to consider. We will have council chambers dotted all around wherever the East Kent Authority is, and I think it might be worth looking at planning decisions in public in those areas. I know that happens in other cases, but I think that's a really strong point. Now to my amendment, if I may, and I hope, dear leader, that you take this in the spirit as which it's intended, that just to add to that, I think we've been very, very fortunate in our leader through this process, and particularly since we're in coalition and speaking to colleagues in other districts, they're not as well informed as we are. Very fortunate in our officers and very fortunate in our leadership, I think, that we are very, very well informed. And I would like to propose an amendment that actually puts that in writing, which is that the leader agrees to continue to keep council fully informed about the LGR process and the outcome of meetings and discussions with other council leaders in Kent and Medway. That basically is to say that you continue to do exactly what you've been doing so far, to keep us fully informed. And I think it's important to show that that open and honest approach continues, that I think we're very lucky in Canterbury to be dealing with this process a lot better than it's been dealt with elsewhere. And I think that amendment will set that down in writing. Do I have a second, though?
I'll second that.
I'm quite happy with that, that's fine. I would do anyway, but that's a really, that's a really good point anyway. I'm more than happy to formalise that, actually, from my point of view. So go ahead, Mel.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to put that amendment in there. I mean, it's in the small print, but I mean, it's just putting it high up the table. But yeah, it's something that I said earlier, that the communication is very, very important. And I just wanted to pick up on the point that Rick said, and I think it's something that a lot of people have been saying, that they feel like they're losing their democracy like because it's going to get bigger. But if you flip it on its head, KCC is massive, and the problem at the moment is, you know, if you want to go to a meeting, you have to go to Maidstone, basically, or Tunbridge Wells or whatever. So actually, we will be making it smaller through going to the unitaries and, you know, that's, in my view, a better thing. So you're not going to be, you know, someone in Seven Oaks isn't going to be making a decision for someone in Bogston, it's going to be more, more closed. So just wanted to say that. But I'm very, you know, as I said before, I'm very, very keen that that process is, we get everyone involved and we have go to them, not the other way around. But happy with your amendment.
I'm happy to agree that, so we just add that to the amendment and we vote on it as a composite at the end, yeah? Yeah, thanks. So the amendment is, and that'd be added to the amendments we have already, so it'd be point three, in fact, that the leader agrees to keep or continue to keep council fully informed about the local government reorganisation process and the outcome of meetings and discussions with other councils in Kent. Yep, that's fine by me. We... Yeah, if you're happy, then we carry on with what we're talking about and then we vote on the whole lot together, if you're happy with that, rather than just go through. Yeah, Pip, please, yeah.
Thank you, Alan. Yeah, I'd like to make a comment really about point C of the second point of the resolution, which is about submit further supporting data and documentation where this adds further substance to the questions asked of the council in the invitation letter. So in that letter that was circulated this afternoon, there is, it addresses letters A to E or whatever, a number of things with a narrative, which I think is really important and really helpful and raises, you know, is discursive and it goes into a whole range of issues that have been considered and will need to continue to be considered. And then there are the options set out that, you know, in full council just now, people were talking about, you know, three unitaries, four unitaries, and if it's four, is it, you know, this one, and the data sets that go with it. And I'm very keen that, because in conversation outside of our meetings, I understand that not, not everyone going down this unitary path is submitting the options. And I think it's really important that we do, not least because we heard in the briefing from our Joint Chief Executives that there are going to be, that we're going to look probably to get a strategic partner to work on, you know, on detail between March and November to, you know, for disaggregation and, you know, what's the best way of moving, moving services around so that they operate, you know, best and with financial resilience? And what I would like government to see early on in the letter for the 21st, that we submit on the 21st of March, some of our working so far, because if the government, if the civil servants come back to us, whether it's weeks or months, and says, you know, option 2A or option 3 isn't going to get past us, then we know that that's out of the way so that we don't waste money in asking and commissioning, you know, detailed work on an option that is never going to be considered, you know, by the government. Because I suspect that this piece of work is going to be massive and detailed and extremely expensive, and while the cost will be borne by a number of authorities, you know, but we will be putting, having presumably to put some money in there, I'd like to get the government steer as early as possible as to whether they consider, you know, all four of our options possible, or three of our options possible, or only two of them, because that way we can refine what we are commissioning. So I'm really keen that that, you know, that paperwork and the work that we've done so far goes in with the letter of submission. Thanks, Alan.
Yeah, thanks for that, Pip. That's noted, that's pretty much what I was thinking anyway, but Peter and also, have you got some stuff you want to just add to that, might be helpful here?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I think on this part, because it seems relatively recent, but when the report was published for Cabinet for tonight and for full council, things were still at very different stages in terms of information we had. So we were covering lots of different bases with lots of different options and recommendations, and this is one of those where even up until about 2 o'clock this afternoon, just full supplementary was published, we didn't know exactly what information would be available for councillors to see or Cabinet to see. So it was a bit of another catch-all one, just being 100% sure that in the resolutions to be made for the delegations for Alan, councillors understood that that could mean other information coming forward that wasn't part of the main body of the submission, but was there as supplementary information. So you're right that not all councils might want to sign up to supplementary, but five days ago, we didn't, we weren't sure exactly what you'd be able to see tonight as well. So it was to try and capture that so that Alan still had the ability to add that supplementary information in.
Yeah, that's quite helpful, that's much clearer than I was on that, thank you for that, yeah. So basically, we're just trying to get as near as we can with the data we've got now, let's share that, let's see where it backs up what we're talking about and what we put forward. Is a group, if you like, there are a number of councils that would be putting that data out there. There are a number of councils that would be getting behind this joint approach. There'll be some councils that will do their own thing based on some or all of that to do. So every council will be marked up and putting their input into it, sometimes with colleagues, sometimes individually or whatever. So that's fine. I don't think any MHLG have got any worries with that whatsoever. Jim McMahon has been absolutely clear about that as well, as the Secretary of State, Minister, I should say, and that's fine. We're there, and then we start our journey moving forward. So that's okay, I'm really comfortable with that. Connie, pick up there, thanks.
Thank you. I know it's a done deal, basically, you know, unitary is going to happen, but one of the things that I was a bit disappointed in that wasn't covered, which is not unique to Canterbury, but is fairly unique to East Kent, is our huge heritage that we have. And I know it's a double-edged sword, so I'm going to be Pollyanna here and look at the bright side of things. We're always talking about the cost of the upkeep of things, but we actually have an income earner, because I was directed by a member of the public earlier to look at the money that tourism brings in. And if I can read my own writing, yeah, £240 billion was brought into the UK in 2023, and of that, £106 billion into England. Well, I think one of the things that we should be thinking about in asking the consultants to sort of put data together is how we can actually capitalise on the fact that we have this historic, I mean Dover Castle, Maison Dure, places like that, of course in Canterbury, as you're often saying, Alan, you can't put a spade in the ground without digging up an Archbishop or something. It's something which I think we should think about and think about in terms of, you know, sort of, we know that funding is going to go to needy areas and Thanet has got very needy areas, but also we do have a huge, I think, golden asset in our heritage that we can exploit from a tourism point of view. And I would just like that to be included in the papers. I know, you know, sort of councillor Apprentice, because he's good at transport, has talked about sort of the, you know, the opportunities of the transport links and things, and he's quite right that the travel to work areas are important, and that's been included. So I was a bit disappointed there was this gap, really. And I personally go for a three-unitary authority. I know that people have talked about we need room for growth, which always reminds me of what I used to say to my children when I, you know, sort of got them to get their school uniform, you know, sort of in August, that they had to have extra long sleeves for room for growth. But that's okay, you know, room for growth is going to be the whole of the South East. And I think there's a lot of advantages in going for sort of the three unitaries, but just a sort of heads up, could you get the consultants to look at that heritage and tourism, just to be the Pollyanna, you know, that tourism angle? Thank you.
So Connie? Yeah, I think actually the value of the unitary authority has to stand on its own feet anyway. In many senses, the word, there'd be council tax take, business rates, you know, all sorts of stuff to go into that. So starting to get that facts and figures together now. So we'll see where that comes and, you know, what's it worth, basically? So, yeah, that's really important stuff. Mike?
Thank you, Chair. I think if you thought you'd already had a lot of meetings about this, this is only the start. And you and all senior officers are going to have a hell of a lot more meetings over the next two years. All we are really agreeing tonight is the very, very start of the process and to say we're going to have unitaries in Kent. Here are some ideas as to whether it should be three or four and what the boundaries might be. And we'll see what comes out of that. But the sooner we know the outcome of that, the better. It is imperative that we start working with our neighbours, whoever they may be, in an East Kent unitary with us, so that we spend our money wisely over the next few years. We work with them. I'm looking forward to a future in a much larger organisation. And we concentrate on the things we've already been talking about, such as what we do with our heritage, what we do with our leisure assets, our parks, our gardens, making sure if necessary we have town councils or parish councils. There's so much to do. This is the first step. It's an important step. And, you know, I certainly trust the leader on this one to have listened to what everyone has said tonight and what's been said in many weeks before, and try and get the best we can for an East Kent that includes Canterbury in the best possible way. So all I really want to say is to actually to wish the leader good luck on this. And I know he will keep coming back to us because he does, he's been incredibly open with us. I know that we have seen so much more information than other councils. And I'm sure that it's the open attitude that Alan has had that has forced other councils hands on that. We've certainly seen a lot more here at Canterbury than we've seen at Kent on it. So, yeah, continue, Alan. Thank you.
Alex, or whoever you want to be.
There we go. I actually just wanted to echo that note of optimism from councillor Nolan as well. And I think the points that were made from the parish council meeting the other day, that it was a really well-run session. Obviously, there were a lot of concerns, and I think concerns that Rick mentioned earlier on. It was a brilliantly chaired meeting. Thank you, councillor Hazelton. But there were a lot of concerns. There's a lot of worries about the distance of councillors from people, about what that would mean for parishes, particularly around planning. But there was a note of optimism there as well. And I think councillor Dawkins made the point, actually, that a unitary authority is closer to them than Kent County Council. And certainly, one of the things that I heard round and about about Kent County Council is that East Kent doesn't seem to get a fair shakeout of Maidstone. And actually, East Kent on its own will be able to give itself more consideration. I love the idea of looking at it from a positive perspective of what East Kent can deliver with the heritage, the tourism, the cultural aspects. And actually, that point that was made earlier on about if we can get the international trains back from Ashford as part of an East Kent authority, you've got of those billions of pounds coming into the country, how many of those then would be flowing in through our ports, through our train stations and through our roads and into the beaches, the museums, the galleries and the cultural assets of East Kent? So I think there is cause for optimism and, you know, hope there's a bit of lightness in step as you go to all of these many, many, many meetings that you'll be attending.
Thanks, Alex. I'm sure I will get used to it. Mel?
Yeah, just one more point, just because I was speaking to some of the other councillors as someone was leaving. So I just think there's, I just want us to make sure that we all keep our feet on the ground as well and don't get completely all consumed by it and forget about our duties of... I know we've all said that, but I can see it happening already by what other councillors say, oh, there's no point worrying about that. We're going to be unitary soon. Or, you know, we just leave that. You know, and it's just like little off-the-cuff marks like that. That's really concerning. And we don't really want to get to a point where we're not actually doing anything that needs to be done today because, oh, it's, we're waiting till the unitary comes along. So just sort of a cautionary tale, I guess, that we keep our feet firmly on the ground for the whole process.
Absolutely right, Mel. I'm totally, business as usual. But the first thing we discussed, wasn't it? When we go, this is business as usual, set that up and we go for that. Also, I think the fact that we're thinking as cabinet, weren't we, about our legacy as a district and working that through, I think that gives us strength and something to work for, all of us, because we need to get that right as well. And we have the opportunity to do that. You know, Pip mentioned about housing, our HRA, which is, you know, two or three of the East Kent councils, if they work together, it will be one of the, probably one of the biggest housing accounts in the country. We own a huge amount of housing between the district councils, Ashford, Thanet, Canterbury, whatever. It's a massive amount. I mean, that's a huge, huge opportunity, but also a huge challenge. You know, there's pros and cons right the way through. So very alive to that, very, you know, welcome for that. And I just would emphasise the thing I said at the end of the council meeting. I think for all of us, we need to communicate by talking to people, going out and just spreading a positive word about this as much as we possibly can, being open and honest about it. And really, nothing is going to change for most people for a very long time. Some, the district councils will be taken into a unitary authority and then slowly be unpicked as the years go by and become much more integrated. That's where the savings come in. But it's not going to happen on day one. So your dustbins are still going to get emptied and they'll be still be digging, you know, doing the park and sweeping the roads and all the other things that we do. It's still got to be done. And it's still be done by the same people in the same companies in the same way for a very long time. So to put people's minds at rest over that, I think is quite good. I think that's probably summary on that. Is there any other comments, anybody? Okay, I'm just going to give Peter and Sophie the opportunity, or Leah, if there's anything you want to say, add to that if you're happy. Okay, so what we're going to do is to vote for that point one, two and three of the resolution. Yeah, okay. Now we've got instructions now. I want you to follow what I'm doing exactly, okay? Yeah, so we're going to do a vote now. Okay. So to vote for is to agree those resolutions.
That's carried unanimously, Chair, with seven votes.
Thank you very much on that. Thanks, all of you. Okay. Now to the next part of the meeting, part B. Items that have already been... Oh, nothing at all. Okay, so just checking, just checking, just checking. Okay, now dating time for next meeting, it's Monday 24th of March at seven o'clock. I haven't got any other urgent business. I think that's still the coast, is it? That's okay. We don't need to exclude the press and public because we've got nothing to discuss there. So with that in mind, the meeting is now closed at 20:23.